I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Mr. President.
Let's pray. Father, thank you so much for this day. Thank you for the opportunity to gather in a place such as this. And we just pray that tonight, that your guide in hand will be in all the decisions that are made. And we just pray for a special blessing upon this county, upon the school district, upon its leaders, parents, stakeholders, students, everyone involved. I would thank you for the blessings that you have poured out upon this place and will continue to do. Be with us tonight. May I ask all this in Jesus' name? Amen?
Thank you, Mr. President.
Will call the meeting in order?
Row call.
Row call. This action is taken by calling each board member's name at the board member entry. Present. Mr. Murray. Ms. Wilson. Ms. Higgins. Mr. Kazoo. And Ms. Whitaker. All board members present.
Adoption of the agenda?
The meeting agenda has been provided. I do not have any corrections or amendments or anything to remove. I recommend the agenda be approved as presented.
I make the motion to approve the agenda.
Okay. Mr. Murray?
Yes.
Ms. Wilson?
Yes.
Ms. Higgins?
Yes.
Mr. Kazoo?
Yes.
And Ms. Whitaker?
Yes.
Public comment. Anyone want to say anything before we get started? We'll have another one at the end of the meeting. Braxton Smith, RCHS senior, and Ms. Carroll Ackerman's capstone engineering class will demonstrate flying in drone.
Ms. Ackerman and Braxton, do you all want to come? I don't know if you're going to fly today, but I think you're going to kind of talk about the class. Okay, alright. For those who weren't in attendance outside, Braxton has given us a wonderful demonstration of the flunk, of one of the drums that they use in class. You have two?
Yes.
Yeah, two drums in class.
With a sound check.
My boys won't believe that I've been crashing, so. Thank you, Braxton.
You got on there already?
You walk all the way across. You walk all the way across to.
Yeah, we had a good time on the trip.
You want to tell anything about Miss Jordan, Miss Rita on the trip?
Hey, they were all fun, actually. They were probably.
What happened to New York City State's?
Yeah, they were a good time when I went to Chinatown. Yeah, they were. They were good price gatherers for us. Got us through the hills and swamps.
So tell us about this class and that drone. And I hope everyone would love to hear about your personal and your pilot license and everything that you work on.
Well, I didn't, I don't know, I didn't expect to get on the, to get in with the drum stuff, but Ms. Ackerman had it in the curriculum. And it was kind of interesting to me, so I really, you know, started trying with it. And I think it took about, I don't know, eleven, maybe twelve weeks to get through the, to get through the curriculum mode. And of course, we went real slow paced and I think at first, there's four students upstairs. And well, it was in first period at the time. And then we completed, we got our licenses, and Ms. Rita come up there and decided that we needed a drone. So now we got that, now we got them too, and they've been pretty awesome. And it made me want to buy one, so I bought one. And well, I take it long on it, but it's alright. I've been able to slowly use it to pay it back. I've had to get to play with it and have fun, so. Yeah, I've been, I've been trying to find a few real estate agents to give me some work, taking pictures, making videos for them. That's, yeah, that's what I've had to learn how to do is make videos. I've never made one before, so kind of, you know, get on YouTube, you know, I'm making video. Yeah, it took a little while. The studying portion of it has really helped me out. So I've been trying to get my pilot's license before I go to college, because I'm going for aviation. And it'll save me a lot of money before I have my, my pilot's license before I go up there, my regular.
You're talking about airplane pilots?
Yeah, my airplane pilot's license.
But you have your, you passed your FAA certification as well.
And a lot of it ties in together, so I've had a big head start on it. Like, a lot of the stuff that I've had to learn has helped me out a lot. It's really, it's really put me ahead. And like, a lot of the stuff that I've had to look into and study for my written test on my recreational pilot's license for airplanes has been stuff that I've already seen. Because the Part 107, which is the drum portion, it, it has a lot to do with aviation in general. You got to learn all kinds of rules and regulations and read maps and stuff. And it's been, it's been a real help, honestly, so it's kind of put me ahead, like, a big step.
So far, Mr. Murray's takeaway is that he's flung the drum all these years, and now he thinks he can fly an airplane.
Well. I, I think anybody can fly a little airplane, honestly. It's, it's really easy. My flight instructor should be real young and.
What did the test for the FAA, I keep wanting to say FAA, for the drums, what all, like, what did it ask you to?
Well, there's about a question, many thousand questions, and they picked sixty of them. And we studied all these questions. And most of them was reading a sectional chart, like airport maps and stuff. There's a few trivia questions, like how high you're allowed to fly, the difference between ADL, MSL, things like that, which is above ground level and above sea level. A few weather questions, have weather reports, things like that. Just questions based off of rough paranormal knowledge and stuff. It was a, it wasn't too hard to pick up, because, you know, we went at a pretty slow pace. We took lots of practice tests. We took about five. We took the real one. And I feel like every question on the test, I'd already seen, because the questions on the practice test were super close.
And you took that summer, you didn't go last?
Yeah. Yeah, there's, there's others. This semester, I don't know exactly how many people she's got certified this semester in her third period, but I think probably twelve or fifteen people.
How many you told them you have now, Mrs. Ackerman? Awesome.
And I know one other student who's bought a drone. Jordan Spain bought one just like mine. And being a pilot, didn't have any good time, just like I had. I really, in all honesty, I didn't have much interest in it until we started doing the license. I was like, well, if I'm going to do this, I'm going to, I'm going to take advantage of it. I'm going to, I'm going to enjoy it. And I really have. It's been a lot of fun.
I think that's really neat, that the drum curriculum corresponds to your airplane pilot license.
Yeah, it's, it's helped me out a lot, a lot of times.
So how close are you on your actual airplane license?
Well, I got to go see a guy named Dr. Sinclair, and I get my medical clearance.
Okay.
And then I'm ready to solo. They taught me how to take off and land and stuff, and my maneuvers. And as soon as I get that, they're going to send me off by myself, and I'll come back, and they're going to cut a hole out of the back of my shirt and pin it to the wall.
Right.
Yeah, and then, then I'll just keep going from there.
My grandfather had two airplanes way back in the day, and I forgot about his aviation maps and stuff like that.
That's right.
Yeah, that's right.
So where do you plan on going?
Eastern Kentucky University. They've got an aviation program.
What were your actual major majors?
I think it's professional flight. They, they've been talking to me. They told me I needed a double major in aircraft management, which is like managing the air force. It's only two extra classes, because they're almost the same curriculum, classroom wise. But if you take those two extra classes, you can have it up a major. And they say it's really nothing, so.
Yeah, absolutely.
It'll be pretty handy.
Well, you've got a great career.
I hope so.
And it's something you enjoy and love when you're excited for it.
You know, I want to say, if you know what to do, you have worked a day in your life, so I'm hoping that's true. I don't know if it's a fact, but maybe. Maybe I can buy an airplane someday. That'd be a lot of fun.
You've got another banquet to get to, see?
That's right. Six o'clock. I believe it's right there across the hall.
Yes, sir. That's your least bad. If you all recall, you know, he was at the ASC certification.
Yeah, I'm not really good at praying in front of people, apparently. I was like, I was like, uh.
You did just fine. You did just fine. I don't give a word to the judge or prayer. You did just fine.
It's kind of funny. I was embarrassed, which is the bad part, but yeah, I was, my eyes kind of.
We're, we're, I know I speak for everyone up here. We're very proud of you.
I appreciate it, thank you.
And Mrs. Ackerman, I just appreciate you so much, because this is, this is a new curriculum. You know, this wasn't something that she could pull off the shelf, because other teachers have taught it in Russell County High School, because she's the first to teach it in Russell County High School. And, and I know she was, I'll mention this, because she was bragging on Ms. Rita Bowles on Saturday when we were together at the Campbell School University, but Mrs. Bowles has been a big supporter of that. And I know it's really neat even to the hula hoops that you all made the obstacles to fly through and all those little things like that.
That's all.
Yeah, but we appreciate, appreciate you, appreciate you, Mrs. Ackerman.
Now it starts with the teacher. Campbellsville University 2022 Excellence in Teaching Award recipients, Melinda Wright, elementary Lindsay Gibson. Shouldn't be in there, say. Middle school, Carol Ackerman in high school.
We'll just start here in order. We had, we had a great day Saturday at Campbellsville University. And just appreciate the university recognizing regional teachers and their, just their excellence. And that's the title of this award, is Excellence in Teaching Awards. And so representing Russell County Schools at this year's event was Melinda Wright and Lindsay Gibson and Carol Ackerman. And I was just thinking of these three this weekend, and you know, they're already noted and respected for so many different things. Melinda, such a hard Kobe Ackerman at the Russell Springs Elementary School, and she serves on the site base council. And Ms. Lindsay, I know is switching jobs, because we've seen, attacked her for another thing next year, taking over the homeless additional position that you all did. And then Mrs. Ackerman, a lot of accolades, and she's always out there doing different things and doing the class, so just proud of you all. And I know you represent Russell County Schools so very well. And we just had a great event on Saturday, had a good meal, and just enjoyed a good fellowship, and all three of you got to be in attendance. We are lacking the nice little portfolios that go on top of the certificates, so we'll give those to you when they, when they come in. But at this time, we will recognize Ms. Melinda Wright. She'll come up to the stage, please. So Campbellsville University Excellence in Teaching 2022 Elementary School Award recipient, representing Russell County Schools. Oh, I'll have to give it. That's great. Alright. And then welcome Ms. Lindsay Gibson to the stage. Mrs. Ackerman, you can be making your white name. Well, Ms. Lindsay said she's going to get them all over there, so she's going to get her picture together. Where do you want to leave this place? Thank you all. Appreciate you very much. It was nice to be back in person with Campbellsville, with COVID on 2020. They canceled it. They just sent out certificates in 2021. Last year, they had a virtual ceremony. We still had teachers participating. But this year, we got to be back in person, have a good meal, and it was just nice fellowship and recognition. Yes, Dr. Mark Rix.
Russell County Education Association Certified Employee Recognition, Shannon Eads.
RCA would like to recognize Ms. Shannon Eads for the month of April. She is a current high school teacher at Russell County High School. English, she teaches English one, two, and three at the high school right now. And she started out doing some substitute teaching at Russell County Schools, and then was an RTI teacher at RCMS, and I got to work with her there. She's gone to Lindsay Wilson College to get her bachelor's in communication, then went on to get middle grades, ELA, and social studies certification, and then followed that up at the University of Cumberland's with her master's in secondary English. I asked her what she likes best about teaching, and she said, "Teaching is building relationships with my students. I'm very lucky to get to do the job I do. Nothing beats being excited to go to work each day." So that kind of plays on what Braxton was talking about earlier. Her hobbies, she loves spending time with her children and going to music festivals and concerts. And I can attest to this, she does not miss a concert, if it is at all possible. She loves her concerts. And Oprah, so, sorry, who am I in there? Her favorite quote is, "It's a privilege of a lifetime to be who we are," by Joseph Campbell. You don't have to, okay. And so RCA would like to present her with this hundred dollar check for Certified Employee of the Month of April.
Congratulations, Miss.
Next, it's concerned agenda items.
We have the previous meeting minutes, payment of bills, school activity fund reports, financial reports, field trips, and the treasurer's monthly report for April 2022. And I know that's at the bottom of the agenda. And Mrs. Ms. Carnes is at a, at a training, could not be present today. And she wanted to obviously be present to talk about more detail for the fiscal year 23 budget and proposed salary increases. And so that's why we scheduled that special call board meeting on May 26th, where she'll be in attendance, so she'll be back later this week. So I will present the treasurer's report. Mrs. Whitaker. Russell County Department of Education Treasurer's monthly report, month of April 2022. Balance on hand at the beginning of the month, eight million, four hundred fifty-four thousand, three hundred and three dollars and twenty-two cents. Total of all receipts for the month, three million, one hundred eighty-one thousand, four hundred twenty-six dollars and seventy-eight cents. Total of all receipts and beginning balance, eleven million, six hundred thirty-five thousand, seven hundred thirty dollars. Disbursements, two million, eight hundred eighty-six thousand, two hundred forty-five dollars and eighty-seven, eighty-seven cents. Balance at the close of the month, cash in bank, eight million, seven hundred forty-nine thousand, four hundred eighty-four dollars and thirteen cents. General fund, Fund One, eight million, one hundred fifty-seven thousand, nine hundred thirty-nine dollars and fifty-five cents. Special projects, Fund Two, two hundred fifty-eight, negative two hundred fifty-eight thousand, five hundred eighty-one dollars and a nickel. District Activity Fund Twenty-One, eleven thousand, seven hundred sixty-one dollars and fourteen cents. Capital Outlay Fund Three Ten, one hundred forty thousand, nine hundred fifty-two dollars. FSPK Building Fund Three Twenty, two hundred fifty-five thousand, four hundred six dollars and eighty-four cents. Construction Fund Three Sixty, negative eight hundred twenty-six thousand, three hundred fifty-one dollars and twenty cents. Bed Service Fund Four Hundred, two hundred fifty-two thousand, six hundred thirty-seven dollars and fifty-one cents. Food Service Fund Fifty-One, one million, twelve thousand, five hundred ninety-one dollars and sixty-four cents. fiduciary fund, Fund Seven Thousand, three thousand, one hundred twenty-seven dollars, seventy cents. Total cash in bank of all funds, eight million, seven hundred forty-nine thousand, four hundred eighty-four dollars and thirteen cents, and signed by Ms. Carnes. I'll note, we have our last major, large piece of equipment that's came in, the plane chair, delivered, Miss Dell, one day last week, I think it was. That was the last big piece of equipment, and so we're going to process that last big reimbursement for the construction of the ATC for the Work Ready Skills Initiative project. And then Fund Two, as you're all very familiar, we spent that money and asked for reimbursements, and that's why it reflects a negative balance on that. So if there are no, and I did want to note also, you know, like, food service has one million, twelve thousand dollars in right now, and our balance at the end of the month is, at the end of the month is eight million. Our, all of our payrolls that come out in June brings that balance down heavy, because those are all the Boston for the rest of the summer. But still good, healthy balances. So if there are no changes or amendments, I recommend approval of the consent agenda items. I make the motion to approve the consent agenda items.
Awesome.
Okay, Mr. Murray?
Yes.
Ms. Wilson?
Yes.
Ms. Higgins?
Yes.
Mr. Kazoo?
Yes.
And Ms. Whitaker?
Yes.
Russell County High School, Russell County Middle School band funding request.
I know Mr. Urban is here, so Mr. Urban, if you'd like to come up at this time, you can, you're welcome to. Oh, he's bringing a rag with him. So this, I know you all have this information. It's a funding request for the band. That wasn't too bad. Representation was, Mr. Urban?
First of all, thank you all for entertaining me tonight and allowing me to speak. I come to you tonight to ask for your consideration and a couple of things. The first thing is our marching uniforms. When I was first hired at Russell County for the 2009, 2010 school year, the band had just recently received the uniforms from the previous director. And the number of uniforms that were ordered at that point was enough for the band, but the band grew over the next couple of years. And we ended up in a mantra, we had these red, white, and blue uniforms. And the way the activity has evolved, it's become much more of a theatrical pageantry, where the theme changes, your active year. And so we kind of got locked into not having enough uniforms on top of having a color scheme of red, white, and blue. Or basically, all we could do is purple every year, that would match, or, you know, go all red, go all blue. So at that point in time, I approached our band groups organization to purchase in stock black coats, so that we could just have a plain palette that we could build on year after year after year. And that's what we've done since 2011. And so part of the uniform is what I'm holding here. These are called bibbers. These are just the black pants that go underneath the uniform. And over time, we took those custom uniformed bibbers that we had, and we've been using those since 2011. It's important to note to you that the lifespan of a band uniform is usually seven to ten years. And so we've been using these since 2011, actually, 2009. We got to the point where this fabric, that they're made out of this Kunkavir bean, and it's, they've gotten more stretchier fabrics now that are more form-fitting and forgiving. Again, with the activity being more theatrical and more of a pageantry thing, the students are now asked to do ballet and dance and that kind of thing. And when they go down, we've had a lot of these bust out in the back. And we got to a point where we said, okay, what are we going to do? And we even went back, and some of the uniforms that were used prior to me being hired in 2009, going all the way back to uniforms that were used even 2003, we started using the bibber pants for that to help supplement what we needed year after year after year. We continued since that time, when we, each year when we start a new season, to take the students, measure them, see what our needs are, and we just called the company and get these basic in-stock pants that are not-for-giving material. And that's how we made them over the years. And so part of me being here tonight is to request the consideration to purchase new bib pants for the students from a different company than what these were made from, that had more of a elastic-y kind of form-fitting. And plus, I think the patterns that they have are male, female oriented as well. So that would be, that would be one of the things that I would request.
That's the request, depending upon the number, it's four thousand, three hundred eighty to five thousand, one hundred ten. Correct me if I'm wrong.
That, that number was, was, I can't remember that number based on how many you projected to have upcoming fall. Typically, I talked to, I forget her last name, her name's Shannon. Talked to her today. She's with Fred J. Miller. And I asked her about when groups order this kind of thing, how many do they typically order? Because a lot of times, they'll order a couple of extra, just to make sure, because we've got some kids that we can measure today, and when we see them again in July, they've shot up. We've, we've had some students that have said, man, I really can't wait till March the season starts back up, because I'm going to lose weight. So we have some fluctuation with it. She recommended that you purchase anywhere between ten to fifteen percent more than, than what you need. And the, the company, she says that they could have these if we ordered them this month. She says that we would have them by August. We really don't even need them until mid-September. So from a timeframe standpoint, we'd be in good shape with that. And so that's, that's one item for you guys to consider potentially.
How many do you have now, Mr. Urban, are you all projecting to have a marching band?
Well, our numbers have taken a hit with COVID, and that's not exclusive to Russell County. I mean, I say everywhere. Right now, I'm projecting that we're going to have somewhere in the vicinity of fifty-five to sixty musicians, which would need those bib pants, and then we've got an additional eighteen to twenty in the color card, and plus a drum major. So we're looking to have somewhere in the seventy-five range. And we're going to be young. About forty-five percent of the group's going to be brand new. But if we can just get them across to the finish line of this upcoming season, then I think things will go well for us to get our numbers back through COVID.
In good years, how many do you usually have?
There's been some years that we've had as many as seventy-eight musicians, so.
They need clothes.
So another, another part of that, and let me just specify the saying, the greatest need that we have right now are the bibbers. What we've been doing with our standard in-stock black jackets that we went to is we have altered those each year to meet our theme. I know since 2016, Ms. Pam Wilson, the high school, has been our primary seamstress with that. I go to her and say, here's what I think I want. She comes back sometimes with even better than I ever thought. She's very, very good at that kind of thing. Unfortunately, Sally's graduating this year. So we've, we've got some new parents that we're going to try to, to take that up. But each year, I mean, our, our uniform, we have a different look, and all that is, you know, I think, Ms. Wilson, she was really bragging on the fact that the, she'll go to Hobby Lobby or wherever, Jones Factory, whatever, she'll buy whatever. I think this past season, she was able to, all of the materials that she needed to make our look this past year, I think she did it under two hundred dollars. So we've, we're, we're trying really hard to be good stewards with the monies that, that we have and just make it work. A lot of groups, you know, in some ways, I like what we do, because it's unique. A lot of groups have went on to do these Lycra custom fitted tops that would run around fifty-five to sixty-five dollars apiece. And they, they somehow crank out the money to fit the whole ensemble in that year after year after year, at a different point. There's some groups that have a, it looks more like a custom jacket, a normal jacket, like a Gaverton type jacket that's got some sort of fabric printed on it, and some of those are a hundred and forty dollars apiece. And I mean, some of these groups come out, and it's, and I don't. And I mean, some of these groups come out and it's, and I don't know how they're able to, year after year after year, do that, but, uh, what we do, I, I think, we, we were one of the first groups to do what we were doing. And, uh, a, again, we're just trying to be really good stewards with what we have. Um, a, a second recommendation, uh, uh, ask whatever, uh, is considering, not now because this, the, the bibbers are the main need, but maybe entertain the thought of, uh, in the future, maybe for next school year, uh, going into twenty twenty-three, not next school year, the year after, uh, the twenty, uh, twenty-three, twenty twenty-four school year, maybe look to consider, uh, new, new coats, new jackets. What I have here in front of you is, it's, this is called a hybrid. You know, when I, when I first started teaching twenty-seven years ago, you would get a coat and you'd keep that same coat, that same look for seven, eight, nine, 10 years. Um, and even when I was in school, it had to be school colors. Um, those days are, are, are gone and with people changing year after year after year, uh, one way that this company recommends that you could do it is to use what's called a hybrid jacket. And you could have this look, I, I really am not a fan of this by the way, this is just a sample that they sent me. So none of this is like a frequency designer, this is just a sample they sent me. But what you can do, I'll give you an idea, is it's basically just a, a vest. And this part here, you can see this is Lycra and this is the gavardine to make it look like it's part of the constructed coat, but it really isn't. And each year, if you wanted a different look, you wanted to have a sleeve that had all sequins on it on one side, and this side was neon green, you know, you could have it with a collar, without a collar, you could get new inserts, I guess you could say. Also aspects of this jacket, you know, let's say that you don't want to have this thing hanging out this year, well, it's Velcroed on. So you can construct a jacket that has a lot of flexibility in terms of what it looks like year after year, kind of like what we're already doing. And, uh, you know, what I would be interested in is contacting the company, starting the process to maybe design something like this that we could look at for future purchase, maybe twenty twenty-three, twenty twenty-four school year. Also to that end, our business organization has been taking, every fundraiser that we do, there's about 10% of the profit we make from that fundraiser that we've been putting into a uniform fund to help with this kind of purchase. I think right now we have around twelve thousand dollars in that fund. And we would be interested in, uh, I know the last time from what I've been told, of course you know how that goes, maybe it's true, maybe it's not true, but, uh, my understanding the last time that uniforms were purchased, uh, for the band, that the boosters went in half. And so, uh, you know, to that end, we would be maybe interested in, you know, if, if it would please you guys and you all be interested in that to, uh, maybe look at designing something and, and maybe going in half or something like that. Other aspects of uniforms are of course the hats, which are called shaygos, those, uh, roughly run around forty-five dollars a piece. There's the fabric that wraps around it that roughly, the cheapest ones are around thirty-five dollars, but those could be upwards of fifty, sixty. There's the fitted plume, those are roughly twenty dollars a piece. Um, I've been told that from head to toe, pants, jacket, hats, plume, um, the, the current tallest outfit, one student, would be roughly around five hundred dollars per student. Um, my recommendation would be to do this in parts. And, uh, again, uh, the, the, the bibbers are the biggest need. We'll, we'll continue to make things work the way we do regardless, but that would be, uh, that would be my request in terms of the uniform. Do you want me to pause now or you want me to go on to the next?
Mr. Urban, I know you want to talk about the, the instruments.
Do you want me to do that now?
Yeah.
Okay. Um, switching gears, um, at the middle school, uh, we have, uh, each year when we start beginning band, we want the students to have good quality instruments. They don't have to be the most expensive, top of the line, of course. Uh, we, we service all the students that we have. The majority of students, when they start off in the band program, they, uh, do what's called a rent to own program, through Music and Arts. Used to formerly be known as Royal Music Atabola Program. And the rental fee is usually thirty-five dollars a month. Uh, saxophones I think are sixty, uh, they're a more expensive instrument. But, uh, what happens is students rent these instruments.
Excuse me, but that, on that part, uh, they turn that instrument back in, that's not a payment plan on that part, right? If they're just renting it?
If, it, it's, it's rent to own.
It is rent to own.
So, so they, they will rent those instruments and usually by the time they are somewhere between seventh, eighth grade or maybe completion of the eighth or third year, they own that instrument. One of the beauties of this program is if you have a student who, say they're playing trumpet for a few months and then we say, you know, trumpet's really not working for you, but you know what? Clarinet is. Uh, the money that they've paid to rent to own that trumpet is automatically switched over to a clarinet and the company just switches out the instruments at that point.
If they totally, if they totally leave you all?
If, if they quit the program, they turn the instrument in, at that point, whatever payments they made at that point is just what they invested in that instrument.
That's their cost, yeah.
Uh, like a new trumpet, you know, a new standard, uh, new trumpet would be maybe thirteen hundred dollars. So, you know, we, we try to encourage them to do this program so that they don't go out and make this huge investment each time. Uh, one of the things that becomes a little problematic is, uh, when students want to be part of the band and maybe they can't afford the payment, uh, the parents think that maybe I'm trying to snicker them or something and, uh, you know, I found this one on Amazon for two hundred dollars, what's he talking about? And I, in fact, today, in class, I had a student, because I was talking to them about, you know, we're getting to the end of the school year, if you're renting from this company, I had a couple of students that were like, can we just turn our instrument in for the summer? No, you still continue to make payments unless you're not going to be with us anymore. And if that, in that case, here's what you need to do. Um, I had a student today, he said, hey, can I leave my instrument with you and send it off this summer to get fixed? And he said, I, I got it off Amazon. And, you know, unfortunately, a lot of students will, will get something off of Amazon, find something really cheap, uh, cheaply made where there's no extra parts to it. Um, you know, if something comes unsoldered on something like that and you give it to a reputable music company and they try to take a torch to it, it, it completely melts and now they have to replace the instrument. We try to do a good job of, uh, we give, we give the students a list of, and the parents a list of, uh, these are recommended bank brands, these are reputable bank brands that you could buy anywhere in the world, take to a reputable shop, this is a good investment of your money. And we still end up with students who, um, have some financial, uh, setbacks and concerns that maybe will go a different route because that's what they have to do. Um, I've recently become aware within the past few months of a program that Music and Arts has been doing with some, I know, I spoke with the, uh, band director of McFadden recently about this, she stood up to me and that's kind of how I came to know about this. Um, what, what, uh, Music and Arts does currently, when they rent an instrument out, they, uh, let's say that little, little Timmy rents a trumpet for six months, at the end of six months says, at Christmas time says, I don't think this is for me, I'm out. They turn it in, Music and Arts takes it back, they'll go over it in their, in their shop, they'll make sure that it's still in regular in order, they'll clean it up, rent whatever, put it back in the case. And then little Suzie, when she wants to rent from another school, here you go Suzie, here's this trumpet. Suzie does the same thing and after this process is repeated maybe up to four times, at that point, Music and Arts says, you know, we've already gotten back the majority of the investment that we had in this instrument. Um, if you want to buy it, it's still in good working order, but we don't feel, we don't feel like it's, it's responsible on our end to continue to rent this and present it as new at this point. Um, so if, you know, here's a trumpet that's been rented out two or three times, we'll sell it to you for four hundred and fifty dollars. It's still a good working trumpet, it's still a reputable brand, it can still, uh, be repaired. Um, my suggestion, my recommendation, uh, what I'm, I'm coming forth with, uh, you all tonight is, I would like to try to start a, um, inventory of instruments purchased in this manner and try to do a couple per grade level, um, roughly, um, say maybe five flutes like that or, or six clarinets or, or what have you, where when a student comes to us and they're ready to start, but maybe they can't afford the thirty-five dollars a month. Instead of them going out here and buying something that's going to break after, even though it's shiny and looks brand new, something that's going to break after a couple of months and be unrepairable, that we can say, it's okay, little Timmy, we, we've got a trumpet here that you can use. And, um, what I would like to do is try to get a base, a number of instruments, and then as each subsequent year goes along, with the funding that, that is provided to the band already, I would like to, to be able to supplement that inventory each year. And Ms. Harrington and I'll look at that and go, you know, we could have used an extra flute this year, we need to buy another flute. Or, you know, we needed two more trumpets or, you know, that kind of thing. Uh, so, uh, I'm just looking for an opportunity to maybe, in a, uh, cheap manner, get some instruments that are still good instruments, have been slightly used, uh, to help a lot of our lesser, uh, fortunate students financially. And this would ensure that every, every child in the band has a great instrument, it's, it's a, everybody has a great bank brand instrument. Uh, and that's one of the most frustrating, uh, things for a new beginner and one of the number one reasons why they quit is because their instrument doesn't work. And, you know, there's, there's, it's, it's heartbreaking for me at times when I have a student come up to me and say, hey, look, I got this brand new instrument. And then they come to me two or three months later and go, hey, it's broke, we, we can, can you send it off and get it fixed? And, you know, I have to, in the most tactful way, explain to them, honey, I'm sorry, they're not going to, they're not going to repair that. Where did you get it? Maybe contact them and see if they have a, a warranty or a repair policy or, you know, um, it, it kind of ties my hands in that way. And if we had a small repository of instruments that were reputable brand like this, um, you know, I, I think that would be a good way for us to help meet those students' needs.
Mr. Urban, that is the ten thousand six hundred and fifty that you had noted, uh, taking the board members packet, but it's five used flutes, six used clarinets, two used alto saxophones, six used trumpets and four used trumpets, correct?
Uh, yes, that is correct. And I had out there beside each one what our goal would be.
Yes.
Total repository, so, uh, or inventory. So, you know, my, my plan would be over the course of the next several school years to buy some additional flutes so that we have at least eight.
What's a, what's a life expectancy if they're taken care of and maintained? Um, what, what do you expect to get out of a flute?
I, I think, I think if it's a reputable brand and the students, you know, there's, it's being cared for and, and not, you know, uh, just thrown around, um, you know, an instrument like that should last a good ten, fifteen, twenty years even.
Awesome.
If it's, if it's taken care of.
Sure.
Do you want to have any more questions?
So your current, um, request is essentially the approximately the fifteen thousand, um, the four thousand three hundred and eighty to five thousand one hundred and ten for the bibbers and pants and then the used instrument expense of ten thousand six hundred and fifty, correct?
That is correct.
And Mr. Urban has noted, you know, in the future years, um, you know, he, he's provided that information that's in your board packet of what he would like to get to in addition to the instruments, but on the, um, the, the uniforms as well. Uh, we all know that our band has a rich, uh, tradition of, of outstanding accomplishments and work and Mr. Urban and Ms. Harrington both do a, do a great job, we appreciate you both very, very much. Um, I'm, I'm certainly in support of this and hope that, um, we could then, at the future, move forward. And I really appreciate the idea of, um, of helping some kids and families out and have that repository, if you will, of some instruments where they're, they're not trying to make payments on their own and things like that, because I'm satisfied, uh, there are a lot of families that can't add one more bill, um, and then, you know, you may not have kids in marching band because that's an expense that they can't, they can't incur. So I appreciate you thinking of, of that as well, Mr. Urban.
Can I make a motion to that thing?
I have a question, Mr. Urban. Let's have a whole understanding, I mean, because I'm saying, you talk about students renting instruments.
Yes.
Who do you rent them off of?
They're renting from Music and Arts.
I agree with you. Why would we, why would we spend ten, fifteen thousand dollars for instruments in case those tear up? It's, it's just for legal, you know?
I'm sorry.
I lost them in twenty transactions.
I'm sorry, I apologize.
What I'm saying is, if the students are renting instruments, why are we buying instruments, used instruments to put back in case those tear up? The renting instrument, if it tears up, we should go find them and replace another instrument?
Uh, there's some students in the class whose families say, yeah, we can do thirty-five dollars a month. There's some who say, we can't.
This would help those students?
No, no, this is for, this is not for the students who already are renting or, I'm already got my sister's trumpet from when she did it, you know, we already have an instrument. This is for students who, um...
Can't afford it.
Can't really afford. Those that do rent, they do tear up, there is a, uh, insurance policy that they pay, I think it's like an extra four dollars or something like that a month, that if a student who's renting, uh, an instrument, then it's, it gets repaired that way.
And you feel good in fact of, of, with this company, at least although they're, they're used, they're well maintained and well taken care of?
Absolutely.
Okay.
And, uh, one of the, uh, one of the people that works for the company, Ricky Mudd, who's been with them for many, many, many years, um, I, I've already talked to him and he, he sent me, you know, what, what it would be roughly per instrument. And, uh, you know, I've already said, Ricky, if we do this, here's what brand of this and this and this that I would really want. And he said, okay.
Does he have, uh, this current inventory?
I, I'm not sure about that, I, I would have to ask that.
Okay. So to go back to your, uh, question, Mr. Urban, I think it, it really goes back to the families and kids that may not have that money, that may want to be in marching band but they just can't, uh, afford to pay that monthly fee to have their own instrument.
That is, that is, that is what's throwing me off.
Okay.
If we've got ten, fifteen thousand dollars instruments laying there in case it makes tears up, why are you renting them to someone?
No, no, these would not be for that.
Except can, that can.
Well, it would be discrimination if you give them something and make another vendor of a sort of borderline, borderline area, I mean, I don't understand, renting them then having all these laying back and back if they, those tear up or, uh...
No, this would...
These ain't being used part-time.
These would be for the, so you can have, pay and rent your own and it, it's your instrument, it's not...
I, I understand all that.
Yeah.
Now, these would be there.
No, this would be property at school.
This would be property at Russell, Russell County schools.
Right.
I understand all that.
And then once they, once they, you know, graduated or decided to not continue, at that point, we would...
Take them back.
Take them back and send them off, have them repaired if need be, and then the next student, that, that was the need.
Well, I'm all for students, you know, getting banned or something like that, I just, that's what's throwing me off, if they're having to rent an instrument, what do we have over there laying back?
Well, we, we roughly have around eighty, around eighty students right now in the little school that are involved with band and not every one of them are renting to own. There are so, some in there that, um, they're, they're playing on something that me and Ms. Harrington have, have tracked down or, or whatnot. Uh, they're, they're playing on, uh, something that mom and dad has been involved for two hundred dollars from J.C. Bennett or Amazon or, or something like that. And what this would do would be help take care of those students that couldn't afford, um, you know, trying to, trying to help those that, um, couldn't afford to rent or, or get a reputable brand. And it would ensure that every student would have, um, a, a quality instrument.
And as expensive as instruments are, they seem like really good, good prices. Of course, it's ten thousand six hundred and fifty for the instruments and approximately five thousand for the, for the bibs and the pants. So it's about approximately fifteen thousand dollars total between the pants.
The, the ten thousand for the instruments, uh, if all, if you were to buy new instruments, a, a new trumpet's going to run you twelve, thirteen hundred dollars. So if we were buying new instruments, I mean, we wouldn't even be able to get ten with, with, with that money, uh, for, for that.
We bought a trumpet and a French horn years ago and so they, like prices come up down. It would really be...
Under all this, what we've heard, I recommend that we approve the large funding request.
All right.
I recommend to make a motion to approve the band's funding request.
So Mr. Urban, for this amount, just for clarification for you and Mrs. Harrington, how I've got ordered here, this would be for the bibs and pants and that ten thousand six hundred and fifty, roughly that fifteen thousand that you and I had discussed.
And I'll say it.
Okay. Okay. Okay, Mr. Murray?
Yes.
Ms. Wilson?
Yes.
Ms. Seagamoff?
Yes.
Mr. Kazoo?
Yes.
And Ms. Wicker?
Yes.
Thank you, Mr. Harrington. We appreciate you.
Listen, I appreciate you all. I've taught in four different districts and been here the longest. And this has always been a band community. And I've been very appreciative of the support that we've gotten continuously from the board over the years. And I'm just thankful to be here and be a part of this. And I thank you so much. And if you've not got anything going on, which I know is the end of the school year.
We're gonna be there Saturday.
All kinds of banquets and all that going on. But if you've not got anything going on, seven o'clock next Tuesday, our recon's gonna see you right here.
But then the banquet's Saturday.
The band banquet's Saturday. You know, I can hear invited to that as well. So, thank you all again.
Keep it going.
Thank you, Mr. Urban. Mr. Urban, we're gonna reach back out to this here in a few days. Me and Mrs. Del will get the purchase orders. We'll start rolling on that.
Change orders, D-Dax for Lake Cumberland Regional College and Workforce Center.
It's always great to have a D-Dax on a change order. So, yep. The two attached change orders are D-Dax as we close out purchase orders for Lake Cumberland Regional College and Workforce Center. There's several, you all will hear about this, there's several documents that will still go into the board throughout this process. So I recommend approval of the two change order D-Dax for Lake Cumberland Regional College and Workforce Center and authorized superintendent Michael Ford to complete the necessary paperwork. One of them is for $6,483.31. I forgot my reading glasses. And I have a hard time. Yeah, I need you to hold it a little bit further to see which companies that went with. This Carol program, FAY, that is for FAY electric. And the other one is an amount of $11,729.59. And that's for Gaddy Shamrock. Yes, yeah, we get some money back, yeah. Well, it's a different fund, though. Construction fund kept by band, it's your band.
Nice try. Swapping around.
Nice try. Okay.
I'll say it again.
Okay, Mr. Murray?
Yes.
Ms. Wilson?
Yes.
Ms. Seagamoff? Mr. Kazoo?
Yes.
And Mrs. Wicker?
BG-1 replacement on BG unit of verification unit at Russell County Schools Auditorium and Auditorium Complex.
This unit is literally hanging on by a thread and is just patchwork to keep it running.
What kind of magic going in there with it?
Oh, no, we have to. It's part of the whole HVAC system. But it's a large unit outside. The life expectancy really is eight to 10 years. We've been really blessed on keeping that unit going. ANC opened up in 2009 and we're still currently using the one that we've got. But it's gotta be replaced as soon as possible. We cannot operate the pool, really this building, without that unit. Thermal service is on a state-approved price contract with Kentucky Purchasing Cooperative. So they've already went through that whole process. They have a unit for installing everything. It's $310,423.59 for the unit and an install. I've given you all a copy of that quote and the state price contract verification. I met with the company representatives many times. And Mr. Thomas and I have talked, Thomas appreciates all his help in this. We are allowed to use the state Escher funds with this because it is part of HVAC. So with approval from KDA, because it impacts the air quality here in this building with the pool. So it is an eligible unit. So it doesn't have to be something that we're using capital outlay or capital funds requests or even a general fund out of that. So we're very, very blessed on that. But it does require, because we're using Escher funds, it does require that BG-1's submitted to the state that we would on any project. And it requires their whole approval process. It is not subject to the resolution that the board previously passed 678, that resolution that expedits things because it uses federal Escher funds. So that is one caveat with that. But the BG-1, the quote and everything here is attached for that. So I would, pending your all's approval, I would send this and the minutes and everything to the state. And they would work back through the process with that. I know that's a big expense. It's some of the cheaper options that we had and looked at and feel really comfortable with the unit. Just really thankful that we can't use our federal stimulus funds versus taking it out of general funds.
Will it take a while for it to be approved, do you think?
It likely could. Maybe not because it's not like building designs and things like that. And I've already reached out to them, so they know it's coming. I've already even sent them the quote and said X, Y, Z, just anticipation of this meeting. But they can't start the actual process until you all work to approve with that.
Put a rush on it because of breathing.
We just, Mr. Thomas is just little fingers crossed that, you know, that it just keeps in operation.
I make a motion to approve that BG-1 to purchase, install the BG unit for the Russell County Auditorium and Auditorium as noted in the quote.
I'll say it again. Ms. Harrington. Okay, Mr. Murray?
Yes.
Ms. Wilson?
Yes.
Ms. Seagamoff?
Yes.
Mr. Kazoo?
Yes.
And Ms. Wicker?
Yes.
I'll submit that tomorrow so we can get that rolled.
Request for letters of interest for professional engineering services and construction management for Russell County Schools athletic facility upgrades.
Okay, so in order to move forward with our athletic facility upgrades for Russell County High School, engineering services and construction management need to be selected. A public notice requesting letters of interest for professional engineering services and construction management are enclosed for your review. It's very similar letters that we've used for other projects in the past. The notices will be advertised in the local newspaper for one week for requirements. Pending receipt then of the letters of interest, if you all approve to move forward on this, then I will bring those back, how many firms submit those. And we would bring them back to you all to select the firms to work with for this project. So it's, as noted earlier, you know, the turf, the track, tennis, all those things, it's more of civil, it's groundwork instead of more self-didact construction. And also while we're talking about that, we have had probably two meetings onsite and then through phone conversations of looking for opportunities for the additional tennis courts. Okay, I know, Mr. Murray, that was concerning for you and some of the others that you all reached out to, trying to make that work and find the space that, and keep a north-south orientation because of the sun. That's something important, too. So I know Doug Gooch, the engineer with AGD, he and I were talking last week on that very thing. We've been onsite regarding that as well. So this is kind of the next step to keep our momentum building. And Todd Vine, which does the bleachers, which is on state price contract, he provided an estimate of the new bleachers and everything for the football complex. He reached out to you. We're needing, I'm needing to schedule a meeting with him just so we can keep things going because he really needs midsummer. He needs approval to have the bleachers fall of 2023. That's how the lead time is on those things like that. So a lot of things have been happening in the background to keep this project moving for the facility upgrades. So I recommend that the Russell County Board of Education authorized superintendent Ford to solicit letters of interest for both professional engineering services and construction management for Russell County Schools athletic facility upgrades. Those would be brought back for you all to approve.
I'll make a motion to that effect.
I'll say it again.
Mr. Murray?
Yes.
Ms. Wilson?
Yes.
Ms. Seagamoff?
Yes.
Mr. Kazoo?
Yes.
And Ms. Wicker?
Accept or reject beds for Jamestown Elementary VCT replacement, first floor.
As I've noted earlier at a previous board meeting, the tile at the ground level floor, Jamestown Elementary School, do not have an option, but it's gotta be replaced. Too many of them are popping up and that is just a bit, just a bit blind, it's just hazard. We, you all previously authorized for advertisement for beds. We received one bed in the amount of $116,000 and that was submitted from Bennett's Carpet. They also included the performance line payment required documents. The day of the bed opening were provided. That was very, very close to our cost estimate of 110, 120. Initially, Mr. Thomas and I were even thinking it would be more than that. So I know that sounds high, but $116,000 to replace all that, basically the whole bottom level minus the gym and the kitchen area for $116,000 is actually a pretty good deal. I know that sounds high, but it's more than, it's less than what we initially thought. So I recommend the bid amount of $116,000 from Bennett's Carpet for VCT replacement, Jamestown Elementary School being accepted as presented. This is another time-sensitive issue because you can imagine a little additional work. All the classrooms, everything has to be moved, they're gonna stage out the gym and then kind of face and look back and forth with the, getting, you know, desks and all those things completely removed for the classrooms for the demo. And they gotta wax that back.
I might possibly accept the beds for Jamestown Elementary replacement.
I'll say it.
He's second.
Mr. Kazoo's second.
Yes.
Great. Okay, sorry. Mr. Murray?
Yes.
Ms. Wilson?
Yes.
Ms. Seagamoff?
Yes.
Mr. Kazoo?
Yes.
And Ms. Wicker?
Yes.
Thank you all. I know Mrs. Blankenschmidt appreciates that, and we all do.
That had been kind of guaranteed with it?
It's way past its warranty.
I mean, you...
Oh, yeah, I don't, it's, our industry's bad. They don't know if it was something to do with the chemical part of the glue in the white tile because it's really the white tile that is all who came up. As like, pushing school up and then for a viable school year. No, I know.
Thanks, professional leave of absence.
So Mr. Joe Wolford, congratulations to him. He has been again elected as vice president of Kentucky Education Association. He was elected to another three-year term. His second term will begin June 15, 2022. So he's requested a professional leave of absence for the 2022, 2023 school year. His letter is attached for your review. I recommend that Russell County Board of Education grant Gerald Wolford a professional leave of absence without paying for the 2022, 2023 school year. Essentially the second letter that Mr. Wolford has presented in the past while he serves as vice president of KDA.
I make a motion to accept it, or professional leave of absence without paying in the next school year.
I'll say it again.
Mr. Murray?
Yes.
Ms. Wilson?
Yes.
Ms. Seagamoff?
Yes.
Mr. Kazoo?
Yes.
And Ms. Wicker?
Amendment SY 2223 intervention remediation teacher allocations.
Back in December, the board approved, we're using the stimulus funds again to keep funding the additional intervention teacher for each of the schools. I had some requests to, instead of just intervention, if the board would grant flexibility for that additional teacher to be used as classroom size reduction. I gave an example there. A school could choose to have the additional second grade teacher to reduce classroom size instead of using the teacher as intervention and remediation. My thoughts on this is principals in school and school-based councils, they know their school best and their needs. And I support this, but I did not want to, because you all had specifically noted that they were intervention teachers and remediation teachers in the past. I felt like something I need to bring back to you all for approval before I gave that permission to do that. So, you know, classroom size reduction is an intervention if you look at that because it does go a lot of more time. And so whatever primary grade was probably the biggest, that principal may have acknowledged, depends on how they choose at their school, use that teacher as a regular classroom teacher instead of remediation or intervention. So I recommend allowing the additional intervention and remediation teachers allocated to the elementary schools to be used for classroom size reduction per school principal and the school-based decision-making council decision.
We have any that are open?
No, not with a cap. Everybody's in their ratio.
Class size does make a big difference.
I'll make a motion allowing the additional intervention remediation teachers allocated at the elementary school to be used for classroom size reduction per school principal and school-site based council decision-making council.
I'll say it.
Mr. Murray?
Yes.
Ms. Wilson?
Yes.
Ms. Seagamoff?
Yes.
Mr. Kazoo?
Yes.
And Ms. Wicker?
Yes.
Just again, clarification, no additional staff, that's just how they made.
Amendment 2022, 2023 district staffing and SPDM allocation policy.
So you all had previously approved the district staffing and SPDM allocation policy. But I'm coming to you this evening to request that two of the custodians at Russell County High School be changed from 180-day positions to 240-day positions. And the revised document is attached to reflect that. There's just so much to do and so many people are custodial staff, absent all the time. Really think this may help with, it's hard to find somebody that's willing, you want to work for 180 days for custodial. And this would give them opportunity for 240 days and certainly that we could use it on the high school campus coupled with athletics and that responsibility. So this would be changing two of the positions of the custodians from 180 to 240 days.
Is it any particular ones or just a position?
It would be two of the positions. One gentleman was gonna leave and I said, "If the board approves this, would you be willing to stay?" He said, "I would." And then the other one has to work so much overtime anyway, this would probably go to him with that. This would put all of the high school positions for custodial, with the exception of one at 240, would that change.
Who is that?
Well, I don't have the name right now. I can think of the one right now for it. Well, in one of the positions, I've never been filled, all year long.
They don't do the technical part of the school?
No, you all allocated that additional staff. And so the state pays for one, Ms. Wicker asked about the new school, ANC. The state pays for one and then we pay, the board pays for the other one.
I make a motion to approve the revised custodial changes for Russell County High School.
I'll say it. Okay, Mr. Murray?
Yes.
Ms. Wilson?
Yes.
Ms. Seagamoff?
Yes.
Mr. Kazoo?
Yes.
And Ms. Wicker?
Family resourcing service center reconfiguration, additional YSC director.
Mrs. Damon, would you like to speak for this?
Sure. Can you hear me from here?
Yes.
Okay. Please, that is digital voice. So, Mr. Ford and I met with the cabinet probably three, four years ago now. I keep saying it's two years ago, but we lost time. I really think it was probably three, four years ago. And what they told us at that point is, the way risk is funded is, you are, a center is funded up to a certain number of students to be fully funded. And then you can add all the students you want to over top of that and you don't get any more funding for them. And what they told us at that time is, you have enough students to have four centers instead of three. So you do a block reconfiguration. And of course, at that time, there was no money. But they said, "Do it and keep doing it and eventually you'll get a fourth center." Well, this is our lucky year. We got a fourth center.
And you may touch on the alternative that they, that we may offer now, not anyway.
Okay, at that time, because we had centers setting with as many as 1,288 students, we, and then we had one as little as 653 students. They got the same amount of money.
Student disparity.
But they were fully funded.
Yep.
And there was a 635 student difference in those centers. So what was happening is, we couldn't even afford to pay state without requesting what's called an alternative funding formula where we put all the money together and divided and fully just paid state, which really wasn't equal because that's the debt into account. where we put all the money together and divided and fully just paid staff, which really wasn't equal because that's the debt into account, the number of students those staff were serving. Um, and they told us at that time that they weren't going to continue to allow us to do that if we didn't apply for a new center when we qualify for a new center. So, in order to get them to continue as well to allow us to do that, so we could pay staff, we complied with their request. So this is the year that they have been able to fund us a new center. Uh, and I'll just tell you really quickly, um, wow, what a difference it'll make. The new center will be, what happened, we will split the, what is the youth service center right now, which is serving twelve hundred and eighty-eight kids.
Grade seven through twelve.
Grade seven through twelve, that does need to count as his grade center. That's going to split that in half. The middle school will have its own center and the high school will have its own youth service center. And then we're going to reconfigure the three elementaries and instead of Salem being with Russell Springs, Salem will be with Jamestown, um, which, which will greatly reduce, uh, Russell Springs numbers as well and will barely both Jamestown's numbers because they're already carrying a sixth grade center with them. So, uh, so it just makes such a difference. So, and, so the bottom line is we went from a range of six hundred and thirty-five students between our smallest and largest center down to a range of two hundred and seven. So everybody will be within six hundred to about eight hundred students apiece versus this big skew of where we had one with six hundred and one with twelve hundred. In addition to that, of course, we're going to get another ninety-four thousand dollars because we're getting a new center and instead of three coordinators will have four because each center on staff is off of one member. Does that cover all basics? It, it's a win.
Yeah, and, and can you?
It's absolutely a win.
There's still a few things to settle out, uh, like the, the, the new director of the middle school, because Ms. Sherry Coffey's going to stay with the high, right, Ms. Sherry? Unless you change your mind, she's going to stay at the high school. So, but instead of now, where she's had to run between high school and middle school, so she can take care of all the needs at the high school and we can have another center director that deals with seven, uh, six, seven, and eight there. And then Ms. Amy Roy will be split between, uh, Jamestown and Salem and she's already worked at Salem when she was a mental health therapist and been working at Jamestown for years. And then, um, so, so the open position will be for the, for the middle school for that. And then, uh, Russell Springs, of course, which board is currently there, will be a standalone center. Um, so we are, I'm sorry.
Oh, I was saying, the win for Salem is Salem shared and coordinated with the largest elementary school.
Right, yeah.
Now those numbers are closer together, uh, because they serve less students, um, and, and we still will employ, um, I think you might have been getting ready to say this, I call this, we'll still be able to keep an assistant that will stay with both youth service centers and then we'll have an elementary assistant that will help with all three elementary centers. So we still can employ those.
I want to publicly thank the legislative, uh,
Yes.
Thank, the legislature, thank, uh,
Yes.
funded this very well, uh, for us to be able to, to, uh, and we weren't the only school district that was afforded an, an additional center director. Uh, but it's been needed and we just really, really appreciate, uh, appreciate that. Just as a, as a note, because hats off to Kevin Williams and our, uh, everybody in our community, over eighty-seven thousand dollars was raised, uh, with that, um, because it has to go to staffing and trainings and other things, really the state only lets you spend a thousand dollars per center of state allocated funds toward what's referred to as welfare spending. So that would be the, you know, clothes or food and things like that. Uh, I'm correct in saying that, worded that correctly that way, right?
That is correct. We even called him kind of out, even a couple weeks ago, Ms. Sherry, it's, okay, show us that in writing, because we can't find that in writing. We want to see it in writing somewhere inside.
But thankfully, thankfully, we have this money from Kevin Williams that helps, uh, fill that gap. So just really appreciate our community's, um, support with that. Appreciate all of our family resource and youth center, service center directors and assistants and Mrs. Dameron. Uh, you talk about doing good things for kids every day, they do great things for kids. Absolutely. So Mrs. Dameron did a really good job of summarizing that, so just to get down to the, my recommendation is, and essentially what this is, is to approve the position and the reconfiguration request. And the position will be that additional, uh, center director for Russell County Middle School and then the configuration request. So I recommend approval of Russell County Schools Family Resource Youth Service Center configurations and additional youth service center director position. Any questions on that configuration? I know that was a lot to go through, but it is a change, uh, you know, there's, every time there's a change, it's, you know, some questions and things like that, but we'll, we'll work through all of this.
I make a motion of that effect.
That's correct.
I'll second that.
Mr. Murray's seconded?
Yes.
Okay. Okay, uh, Mr. Murray?
Yes.
Ms. Wilson?
Yes.
Ms. Hickamoffen?
Yes.
Mr. Kazoo?
Yes.
And Ms. Wicker?
Yes.
So we can, uh, post that position now, after you all approve that, and we'll move forward on, on getting that on the board and be ready for, uh, the next school year.
Contracts, memorandums of agreement, approval.
We have some agreements and memorandums and agreement and contract, the Lake Cameron District Health Department, it'll be, uh, for, for approval. The first one here, uh, uh, just really appreciate all that the Health Department does. This one is funded and it's, uh, opportunities for sexual risk avoidance education program that they provide and, let's see. And then we have their contract for a white company, their auditor, the Commonwealth of Kentucky for the fiscal year twenty-three and twenty-four. Hats off to Salem Elementary School because they, they received the Read to Achieve, uh, grant for that. And then the Lake Cameron Community Action, uh, local education agency agreement, that's for Head Start for this coming up school year, two thousand twenty-two, two thousand twenty-three, uh, school year.
I could, I found nobody, but the auditors can write all of these pages.
Except for the state one?
And say nothing except for that one.
That is a lot, let's see, for the state Read to Achieve grant, uh, let me just, seventeen pages, yeah.
Well, I'll be sure to more than that. I'll read that to you in a year or so.
I'll second it.
Ms. Brandon, did you make that? It's okay. And Ms. Wilson's second. Mr. Murray?
Yes.
Ms. Wilson?
Yes.
Ms. Hickamoffen?
Yes.
Mr. Kazoo?
Yes.
And Ms. Wicker?
Yes.
So that Read to Achieve grant will continue to fund that reading and intervention, just that for, uh, Salem Elementary School.
Okay, uh, twenty twenty-two, twenty twenty-three principals combined budgets.
So you have each school's, um, uh, principals combined budget, they have to submit this every year. I know you all have been around for several years now, this is old hat. Um, so I recommend approval of twenty twenty-two, twenty twenty-three principals combined budget, uh, for each school.
I make a motion to approve the twenty twenty-two, twenty twenty-three principals combined budgets for each school.
I'll second it.
Okay, uh, Mr. Murray?
Yes.
Ms. Wilson?
Yes.
Ms. Hickamoffen?
Yes.
Mr. Kazoo?
Yes.
And Ms. Wicker?
Yes.
Workers' compensation for school year twenty twenty-two, twenty twenty-three.
So the tax quote, uh, is from Houston's insurance group, is for Russell County Schools to continue with KIMI. We went with them last year after Church Mutual, uh, we had a higher premium and we kind of chopped the market some. We're still within that window without putting it back out to market. We can continue with KIMI for another year, um, and, and I recommend that we do that. Thankfully, our, um, premium is going to come down from eighty, eight thousand, eight hundred and thirteen, uh, for the twenty-two, twenty-three year. Our cost estimate is eighty-six thousand, three hundred and sixty-five. Uh, pray that we have another good year and then this next cycle, this time next year, we will drop off, uh, a high year that we had some surgeries and things like that. And our mod rate, our experience mod should come down. Uh, you see it went up, uh, a tenth of a point from one point zero five to one point zero six, uh, for the twenty-two, twenty-three school year. But the rate still went down, so I'm really, really pleased to see that with KIMI. Um, again, eighty-six thousand, three hundred and sixty-five thousand dollars for our workers' comp insurance. Anytime that you can get a workers' comp premium to go down is, is a, is a good thing. Um, and they, excuse me, they too have implemented the nurse hotline. For instance, if I get hurt now, uh, any employee gets hurt, instead of us having to make a vague decision, if it's emergency and we see that, it's automatic, you know, doctor or hospital. But if it's just something that's kind of questionable, uh, you call the nurse hotline and that's how you report the accident or the, or the injury. And the nurse will kind of triage and ask some questions and it's, uh, it's, it works out very well and it's a great reporting tool, uh, to do that. And so we've staffed by, um, registered nurses with that. So that has really, KIMI did not have that in the past and we hated that because Church Mutual didn't, Church Mutual did. But since this time, they have implemented and we were actually one of the first districts to get to move with it, with KIMI because we had experience with it before. Um, they're really good to, um, uh, to check into us, with us and meet with us throughout the year. And I didn't, I didn't mention that when we was talking about the auditor, um, that's another thing. I, I just really appreciate, uh, throughout the year, we have questions. It's not just at the end of the year when they're going through our purchase orders and checks and all, they're, they're really good to reach out to and ask questions. And he encourages that because he'd rather tell us no throughout the year than us do it, mess something up, you know, or something like that. But he's good to, uh, to direct us throughout the school year too. And, um, the Houston's group with, uh, KIMI Insurance Group, um, just as well, they're, they're good to meet with us throughout the, throughout the school year. Keep us, um, up to date on things. And they're training, they're doing training this summer for staff as well. So I recommend Russell County Schools continue using Houston's Insurance Group for Kentucky Employers Mutual Insurance, KIMI, to provide workers' compensation for school year two thousand twenty-two, two thousand twenty-three. We'll have our fleet and property liability, uh, probably next month, uh, for, for the next school year.
I'll make a motion to next, uh, you definitely say, but the major field plan, very rare.
That's, that's a rarity, it is.
I'll second it.
And faculty and staff just being cognizant of, um, of things really helped with that too. Okay, Mr. Murray?
Yes.
Ms. Wilson?
Yes.
Ms. Hickamoffen?
Yes.
Mr. Kazoo?
Yes.
And Ms. Wicker?
Yes.
Out of state and/or overnight trips.
So the Future Farmers of America, FFA, June sixth through the ninth, twenty twenty-two, the Kentucky State Convention, Lexington, Kentucky, and National Skills USA, uh, competition. Well, I'm sorry, then June twentieth through the twenty-fifth, National Skills USA Competition, Atlanta, Georgia. And Russell County bus will take students to London and then they will take a state charter bus with Skills USA, uh, to go on down to Atlanta, Georgia with part of Skills USA, yeah, with other area technology center students. So that's a great opportunity, uh, for the students. So I recommend approval of the out-of-state and, and/or overnight trips.
I'll make my approval of our state overnight trips.
I'll say, agree.
Mr. Kazoo's second. Uh, Mr. Murray?
Yes.
Ms. Wilson?
Yes.
Ms. Hickamoffen?
Yes.
Mr. Kazoo?
Yes.
Ms. Wicker?
Yes.
Russell County Schools SY twenty-two, twenty-three Certified Evaluation Plan.
Do you have anything to add, Mrs. McCall?
No, they're all good as is, so.
Yeah, there have not been any changes to the substance of their, uh, Certified Evaluation Plan. Um, there's, uh, you know, this has been approved and essentially the same plan that we're operating on for the twenty-one, twenty-two, uh, school year. I recommend approval of the Russell County Schools Certified Evaluation Plan along with the accompanying assurances. Appreciate Mrs. McCall cutting that up and she's been getting the appeals committee, uh, together and those other committees, so.
I'll make a motion to approve the Russell County Schools Certified Evaluation Plan along with the accompanying assurances.
And I'll say.
Mr. Murray?
Yes.
Ms. Wilson?
Yes.
Ms. Hickamoffen?
Yes.
Mr. Kazoo?
Yes.
And Ms. Wicker?
Yes.
K twelve, K through twelve, LAL plan for serving English learners.
And I just want to note, the LAL plan does not, the LAL does not stand for anything, it actually results from a losses several, um, um, decade to go back in the, back in the seventies. So school districts are required to formulate a plan this year for English learners and we had, we had to have it ready and submitted by the end of this school year. Attached is the K twelve LAL, it's, uh, what's referred to as the LAL plan, it's for English learners. And Mrs., uh, Ms. Retro would have been here this evening, but she had a softball game. Um, and, but this is our plan for serving English learners enrolled in Russell County Schools. And I just noted there, the term LAL stems from a court case, LAL versus Nichols in nineteen seventy-four, uh, regarding the student, services for students that do not speak English. It was actually, um, in, uh, originated out of California. So I recommend the K twelve LAL plan for English, um, for serving English learners in Russell County Schools be approved as presented. Uh, you note the background, the guiding principles, the enrollment, the placement, the description of the program, all those things are outlined in our, uh, our LAL plan. And then once, once this is noted, um, Ms. Retro has it on file, uh, for the state.
Do we have different languages?
Our primary language right now is really just Hispanic, yeah.
I'm going to break that at way.
Oh, multiple, yes, yes. Of course, they have the refugee resettlement there in Warren County and they get in. Uh, years, years ago, I did a practical at Ishman McGinnis and there were a summer program in, in Warren County, of just multitude.
It was, it was way.
It was, yeah.
I might most of you recommend the K twelve LAL plan for serving English learners in Russell County.
I'll say.
Mr. Murray?
Yes.
Ms. Wilson?
Yes.
Ms. Hickamoffen?
Yes.
Mr. Kazoo?
Yes.
And Ms. Wicker?
Yes.
Personnel reports.
Whitney Coe, Jamestown Elementary School resigned as a MSD teacher. We, um, appreciate Ms. Whitney, wish her all the best. She's going to, uh, she lives in Derrick County and she's taking a job there in Derrick County. Holly Miller, uh, thank her for her service, she's retiring at Russell Springs Instructional, um, uh, Assistant. Tiffany Anle, um, she was hired for a position, I think it was already reported to you all, as instructional assistant at Salem Elementary School. But since that time, she has declined the position, as noted there in your note. Vanessa Burton, Salem Elementary School Special Education LBD Teacher. Um, she was currently working with our, um, students that were virtual and, and, um, thanks to that, with COVID related, this school year and next year, she'll be a special education teacher. Brittany Merle, um, moving, um, she's resigned as Russell County Middle School Special Education LBD Teacher. Laura Schuman, hired Russell County Middle School ELA position. Sean Collins, he's resigning as assistant football coach of middle schools, helped us for a number of years, wish him all the, all the best. Heidi Atkins, a, a substitute teacher, a position hired. Felicia Coffey, she will be, um, working with our district wide home hospital instructor for, for this coming up school year. Appreciate her services, working with students that were quarantined this year and she's really helped us a lot on home hospital as well. And then Brittany Day and Abby Myers were both hired as district-wide substitute teacher positions. And after this was already kind of put together, um, as you all know, we welcome Kevin Reynolds as the next principal at Russell Springs Elementary School. See, getting started here at Russell Springs, effective July one. And I do want to note, uh, again, we'll, we'll put that out, uh, but May twenty-sixth in room one fourteen. And we may have some other things on the agenda, but as I noted at the first, when Ms. Carnes did not be here this evening and she wanted to be here, obviously, to talk about the high points of the fiscal year twenty-three budget and our, um, uh, salary schedules for fiscal year twenty-three as well. Uh, one kind of complements the other, obviously, with your salaries, salary raises and things that we're looking at. Uh, some, some different scenarios that we want to, uh, to, uh, to present to you all. Um, it has to be, uh, more than just that two, two percent raise, you know, um, and I think we, we've got a reserve balance, um, to where we can look at some better options for our, for our faculty and staff. Um, and the CIC has really helped that, that the legislature, um, has allocated and some additional transportation funding. Uh, last year, we gave the two percent raise to faculty and staff conditioned upon that full-day kindergarten and they funded that again, but they did not permanently, they did not codify that. That's only in the, in the budget bill, so we have that for two years, so that's nothing that we want to bank on every year and if that's not going to be codified. So taking into account the two percent that we gave last year, we have to keep that in the back of our mind, that we don't have a permanent funding source for that because kindergarten funding was not full funded, but I, yeah, uh, yeah, the stack of those. But I think we are, and Ms. Carnes will tell you this on the twenty-sixth, um, and we'll get that out to you all, of course, before the twenty-sixth, with the board members to review. Um, but we're positioned right now, um, especially with the CIC increases, that we can, we can look above, uh, a two percent. And then look at, you know, last year, how we took some, like the custodians, we kind of looked at them and, and worked on some individual and we're doing, doing that again. Um, finalize that for, for two, two percent to you all. So the budget has to be, the attempted budget has to be to the state by the end of May. to the state by the end of May. So that twenty-sixth date, we'll still work with that. And that way, Ms. Carnes can be with us to.
It's three o'clock.
Pardon me?
It's three o'clock.
Three o'clock in room one fourteen. And we may have, of course, we've not finalized the agenda, but we may have some athletic things to talk about, some facility things with that as well. And that, and that, I just want to bring this up because that freezer is installed at Russell Springs. Everybody can rest. I sent Miss Joy a picture of it when the freezer was installed. She takes it back out of the loop.
We're going to go ahead, Russell Springs.
We did.
Graduation is seven, seven o'clock, Friday, seven?
Yes, a week, a day after their special call board meeting. Yes.
A week from Friday.
A week from Friday. Yeah. And I gave you all the graduation walkthroughs. I think everybody has them as well, but I can send them back out to everybody as well.
Nineteenth to twenty.
I'll be coming.
Yes.
We wish our baseball ball teams.
Wow, so winning.
Yeah. And district tournament this week. I'm sorry, second it?
I'll say it.
Okay. All in favor? Have you got a score up late on the game?